Meeting.
Oh, the meeting.
I haven't.
I don't have time for this one.
Yes.
All right, the recording has started. All right. Do you want me to go call Ceelee, see if she's coming?
Would you mind, Terrible?
What? No problem.
And I'll just do my normal spiel and then we'll talk about Dan and we'll talk about our agenda, et cetera. So I'm calling us to order. Whitney, what time do you have?
Seven oh one.
Seven one. Watch of that. Whitney takes our minutes. The important things for our minutes on this board are considerations of the points of law that we have to make for deciding whether we're going to grant a variance. There's five criteria that we have to consider and it's pretty important for any judges on appeal to see in our minutes that we did discuss each of those criteria and if there were any points that a member wanted to make with regard to a particular criteria, we want those in the minutes. We also record in the minutes a nifty little thing called the findings of fact. We have a little sheet that, I mean, everybody can have one and fill it out as they go and then we consolidate them and those go into the minutes for each hearing also. But, I mean, they look very simple, but it's things like this is, this is a, you know, a five acre lot in the R three zone. The houses, we just say very directly factual things like that. And we try, in the findings of fact, we try not to stray into opinion because it has to be pretty standard fact. And the point of all that is that we do, we listen to our presentation from a from an applicant and then we draw our findings of fact and then we discuss the criteria and we make decisions about the criteria based on those facts that we found in the hearing. So that's the general process. All right. We are a quasi judicial board. Apparently a legal term of art that means we are not, we're not like the planning board. We don't. We're an appeals board. Essentially, everything that comes before us is an appeal from an administrative position or from our ruling by another board. So on rare occasion, we hear appeals from the planning board. If the planning board says, no, we don't like that, the people can appeal it to us and then we'll hear it decide. Anytime somebody comes before us from the variance, technically what has happened is that they have asked for a building permit and the building inspector or the permitting office has said, no, you can't do that. In, in actuality, what happens is Rob tells them, hmm, that's, that would be in violation of the ordinance. I think you need a variance. And so they come down. As, as a board of elected officials, we are we are independent of the select board. We are independent of the planning board, but we operate within the rules of the town. We have our own bylaws that we have to operate under, that we have to operate by. If we want to change our bylaws, we'd have to pose that change and discuss it. We have to review it in a second meeting and then in the third meeting, we can vote to accept the change. There is a wealth of knowledge about zoning boards in particular and land use in general at an organization called the New Hampshire. Are they still NHMUA?
Yep, in this association.
Yeah, in this association.
I can get you some good literature.
He's gonna, yeah, we're gonna hook you up with it, with stuff that will help get up to speed.
One of the things my commission say is because we're an elected board, the rules for us are different. We're like a separate committee.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's what I was getting at when I said we're elected and we're not. We operate independently of the select board and the planning board.
Yeah.
Yeah. We use the town council. So if we got a question of law, we will say, we can't decide that tonight and then we will ask Rob and the town manager to ask the town council for an opinion. And generally what they say, we follow. Not as a dictate, you know, not as we're going to do whatever they say, but we, it would take a lot for us to go against the council's opinion.
If you change the board, change the votes, the change its bylaws, we are independent, the select board does not have to approve us.
Yeah. Select board has a say in that matter. We are, we are an independent body, just like the select board is. We are beholden to the state, the state laws and we have to get along with the other boards and so we strive not to very deliberately work not to go against the other boards. It's almost never a reason to do that.
I see.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna get you a copy of the bylaws.
Yeah, I make a, I make a binder. It'll have the zoning ordinance in it, all of our regs, as well as the rules of procedure. I can do that this week and get it to you.
So that's probably enough talking for me about the way we operate. The general format of the meetings is, well, I've actually changed that and that's why I wanted to have the group come together tonight to vote on your appointment and to talk about the change to the agenda, you know, the, a new decision procedure. So used to be we would, used to be out with, used to be we do the minutes at the end of the meeting, but for a while I've been wanting to do that before hearings because sometimes we will, in the future, we'll be having two here, two, we'll be hearing a case across two meeting dates. What I want to do, and this is getting into the meat of the business, let's discuss it after we do our minutes and stuff.
Can I say something about the minutes? I think when we have a whole stack of hearings, we ought to put the minutes at the end, but we can vote to do that at the beginning of a meeting instead of calling it process so that people don't have to sit through it. Though there are never any errors in the minutes anymore because we've got Whitney, but if we ever lose Whitney, we're up a creek.
Right. So the way I wanted is, I want the, I want the agenda written so that we'll have minutes and before the public hearings. Okay, you've got them reversed right now. You've got the public hearings to make first. So I want that changed. I want the approval of the minutes to come essentially at the beginning of the meeting. So that if we had business in the previous meeting that relates to this meeting, we get our minutes approved. They're formalized. So any actions that we took are now complete. Then we'll have our hearings. We'll do old business first and then we'll do new business. And then we'll open the floor to the public if anybody wants to make a general comment about something and then we'll close. What I think we'll do.
Okay, yeah, because here it's got old business after new business.
Yep.
A bunch of other stuff. Okay.
And Rob's gonna rewrite that into the.
I want to leave the reading of the minutes flexible depending on what we need.
We can, as you said, and I like that suggestion, we can vote at the beginning of a meeting to put off the approval of the minutes until after the hearings are done.
Yeah.
But in the order of the agenda, the regular agenda that gets posted to the public, I want.
The minutes because you, you've got, we've got something coming that we don't know about.
No.
Oh, okay.
No. This isn't about anything in particular. I just want the minutes approved before we start the next year.
Can we vote to invite Mr. Reagan and say, we're glad he's here?
Yes. So, so that's introducing the new agenda format. What you see here is not the new agenda format. You'll see it next time when it goes out. And our next.
Next time, or is it not something we need to vote on?
It's not something we need to vote on. It's, it's the chairman's prerogative, but I wanted to discuss it with you guys and say.
Explain. Yeah, yeah.
Right. So, so if we do it the way I want to do it, it's call to order. And Whitney, if you write this out.
Yep, I think I got it.
Call to order. Minutes. Old business.
Public hearings. Old business first.
There is not really any, there is a section of the meeting called public hearings. That won't be a Roman numeral in the agenda. Old business. New business. Public comment.
New business being the presentation of the, the cases for the day.
Right.
Okay.
And then we would, we'll say in the next meeting and then we'll adjourn.
The public comment, uh, usually do that after, the way you say it now, it's as if it comes after the whole thing, whereas the public comment is usually after each case.
Okay. Allow me to draw a distinction between.
Oh, please, please.
Our meeting agenda format and the format of a hearing.
Got it. Okay.
So during our meeting.
Yes.
We will, during the old business, have any continued hearings.
Okay.
All right. And in the new business section, we will have any new hearings.
Okay.
All right. And so in a new hearing, the order of business will be admin reads the public announcement.
Okay.
I think this is in the
Yeah.
Bylaws. So admin announces it. Chair. Comments briefly, maybe. In that, during the chair making comments, I would have to seek an alternate perhaps. Like so if somebody's not there for that particular hearing, I would seek an alternate for that hearing.
Okay.
They don't get seated for the whole meeting. Chair comment. And then we have presentation. During which we would like to hold our questions and let the people speak their piece, but you know that I often don't do that.
We're all guilty of that one.
Yes, we are.
Well, sometimes they aren't very clear, Mike.
No, they're not, right? And sometimes we go right into the next thing, which is questions from the board. And after questions from the board or during perhaps, there would be public for and public against. So this is where we would.
Of response to the cases.
Yeah, public response. I like that better. So during a hearing, we have all that. And this is a new change that I want to introduce. I don't want to make decisions on the night that we hear the application.
Okay.
Yes.
Let's, this, discuss.
Discuss. Before we go into that.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, no, we're not, we don't have to.
Why, why do you think that this needs to be so changed and so formalized? I gotta say, I was comfortable with the way we're doing things and I thought we were doing a good job.
I think we are too, and I don't think there are many changes. This is basically what I'm posing here is basically how I run the meetings.
Yeah.
But I want the agenda to reflect that. I want the agenda that we publish to reflect that. I like to tell people the way it's going to go. I don't want them to come in with a, with a three heading agenda and wonder how are things going to go in this meeting.
Okay.
I want them to see it beforehand.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to know why you want it so formal. I'm not objecting. I'm just asking.
Curious to know what the reasoning is?
Yeah.
That's it. I just would like to see, I would like to give people an expectation of, I would like to give them a preview of how, how our meetings go.
Okay.
And I'm setting up, this is a change. I'm setting up this idea of old business and new business so that we can, we can hear the presentation of a case tonight. And then at the end of that presentation, after all the discussions, we close that, we don't close that hearing, I'll find the right words. But we suspend that hearing until the next meeting. At the next meeting, we come back and each of you can have, have had time to review it, to write the, write any motions you want to make. And this is, this is where, this is one of the reasons I want to do this. When we issue a decision, a written decision, notice of decision, it has to have not just what we decided and the reasoning, but it also has to have all the conditions that we want to apply to that decision. They can't, we can't depend on them being in the minutes. So I want us to be able to come back to that second meeting with the notice of decision written up and ready to be voted on. So when we get in the meeting, somebody will hand me a motion and said, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we, on this matter, vote to deny or vote to approve with these conditions and you will have the conditions already written out so that Rob can type them into a form. We can sign them that night.
So when will he type them in? Will we do that discussion and come up with the formula? When we, like, when will we do that? Because I might go home and think about it for another month, but then how do I, you know, what's the mechanism for getting my comments to you or saying, oh, I think, you know, this should be the condition or like, how, how do we handle that process that when we come in, we have a thing to vote on? That, that we've all, in, in a way, we should all have a sort of agreed on it, either that we're going to be here discussing it and then he has to go type that up again. Am I get?
Maybe the typing up doesn't happen that night, but I think it can. But I, so I don't have this all figured out.
Right.
That's why I wanted to talk about it.
Well, yeah, no, I completely understand. I think it may.
What do you think? How would you see it happening?
One of the things that's floating through my head and the things just float.
You have ideas.
Is that there's the business of a public meeting and it sounds like there needs to be some email back and forth between the first hearing and the decision. And that's, at least according to the town manager, it's just still an incredible problem.
Yeah, we should not do that.
Yeah.
So how do we get? For me, it's fresh in my mind when I've heard the people, unlike that one on the corner over there that was, of course, we're going to approve that. The one thing that, the last time, there really wasn't a question as to whether or not we should approve it, we should approve it, and we did.
I'm okay with doing things like that. If we come in and we hear a hearing and it's very clear to all of us that they like that last one once, I'm okay with that. We, you know, you can say, Mr. Chair, I vote we, I'd like to propose that we vote this motion tonight since it seems so clear.
Yeah, well, it's, it's what I want, I guess what I want, Mike, is the flexibility that we've had, because that last big hearing that we went two weeks, that two months, that was, we finished it up the second month. That's right, we did. But we didn't have anything in between. We just did it and waited.
Which hearing was that? The, I thought he, I thought he went away. I think you, I thought he went away. We never decided that, that big thing up on Bog Road. Is that what you're talking about?
No. No, the, the thing down on Meadow Brook Lane, that, 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 can I say his name?
Yeah.
Bagley.
Oh, Bagley, right, right. They came, so that was a little different. They came and they decided they didn't want us to hear the application until we had a full board.
Yeah. Um, can we do something like in those cases where, because we're clearly talking about the stuff that's a little more authority that they're like, can we do something where maybe in front of them, we, we have a thing where we, the three of us here in front of everybody, write up our recom, write up something that we can say is a recommendation so that it's all done here in front. Everybody hears about it. Then when we come back a second time, we can do another sort of little process and say, well, we're starting from our recommendations from last week. This is the motion. These are the, you know, these are the, the conditions we put, and then we vote on it.
That's exactly what I want to see happen.
Well, but, but thinking it take two months can, can be a problem sometimes for people to.
Like, Dan, comment and a question to Susan's point, as the average property owner in town, if I have an issue, I'd like to think I could come to the board, talk about the issue, make my case, allow the board to discuss it and then walk away with the decision. The idea of it taking two months, and I know sometimes it has to take two months, but I think the average case, it would be nice and I would think it would be efficient. I wouldn't see this board as bureaucracy. I would see it as, as helpful and a target with me. The, that'd be the first thing. The second thing is a question would be, what if Susan is present during the first meeting and hears the arguments that are made? And she feels very strongly about it, but then the next month, she's not here. Does she still get a vote or because she's not here at that second meeting, does she now not have an opportunity to share with the rest of the board her point of view?
Two things, an answer, perhaps three. We schedule these meetings a year in advance, so we know that every second Tuesday is reserved on our personal calendars to be here if needed. He cancels if we don't have meetings, but usually two weeks in advance. So we won't waste the time, but we all, we all commit to being here. So if somebody, but somebody, I mean, people do get sick, et cetera. I don't know what to do in that case. I, I don't think it would be fair to our applicant to make them wait another, for another meeting until the missing member can be present.
Well, wouldn't that depend on where there's a quorum?
Yes, we, we're not required to. You're right.
Still do it.
Yes, we can, we can definitely do it. As long as we have a quorum, we can act.
I love you, Jilly, but I think it's a bad idea to do it for two months. I think that, that we ought to do it on a case by case basis. And if it's really, really complex, then maybe we say, well, we need another month to do this particular piece of business, but I don't think that it ought to be codified in your agenda that you're going to come and you're going to present your case and then you're going to have to wait a month for a decision. I've got to agree with you, Dan. I, I think that it's because we're an elected
You don't often have to do it either.
Board and it's very difficult, not for you or me, we're here, but it's difficult for people to come to present something to an elected official board. We're making life decisions for these people and we shouldn't take two months. I, unless something comes up that really requires it, I think that we should plan on deciding while the people are here and have presented their case, instead of requiring them to come back a second time. I, I got to agree with you, Dan.
What was, Mike, what was your, what was the problem that you were hoping to solve with this? What, 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 why did you want to make this change?
I, I had some other points I wanted to make in response to Dan's.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Question. The second, and I, but I can, I can tell you that, this might address your concern also. I'll just be as brief as I can. Number one, this is not a strange practice in most towns. What we do, deciding everything on the same night is, is a little odd. Many towns do this two stage thing. And I'm not saying we have to do it every time. I'm, I'm, I'm willing to consider that we just have it as an option. Did we answer your question about what happens if somebody's missing from a meeting?
Yes and no, to be quite honest. I appreciate that it's booked out a year in advance. I appreciate the commitment of everybody on the board. But you're right, things do come up. And again, if the deciding vote were sick that night, is that fair to the property owner?
Yes. It's the board that renders the decision. And we will take into, we will take into consideration, if Susan makes points the first night and we're doing a two night meeting.
Yeah.
If Susan makes points on that first night, we're going to take them into consideration during our, during our discussion.
Yeah, if, if it's, it's a quorum, I mean, I don't, I don't think that you get points for how much you disagree or agree. You either vote for or against, so.
But I think you're right. Sometimes it comes down to one person.
Yeah.
Because you need three positive votes.
Yeah, I mean, it has, if we have had experiences here where it has.
Yeah.
I just, it's fine that sometimes you have to spend a long time and you got to get a lawyer in. We've done that. And it takes quite a long time and we never, that one over on Crystal Lake, we never really, but I think that the problem I see, Mike, is codifying this, that it's going to take two months.
Let's not do that thing.
I mean, you know, sometimes it can take two months and we need to take two months and we should, but I don't think you ought to codify that into the agenda that this month, we're going to hear you and next month, we're going to give you a decision. I, I think we are, I think we ought to be of.
Would you like to hear my answer to Madeline's question about what problem?
Yeah, what, what problem, what made you decide to propose this?
We get to the end of a hearing, especially if it's, if we've had two or three hearings, we get late into the night. And I don't know about everybody, but I become more malleable as I'm tired. I, it's easier for people to sway me with emotional arguments or and I want the freedom to say I don't think it would be, I don't think it would be a good idea to decide this case tonight.
But you can still say that. You don't have to codify it.
You're right.
Can we do something where Rob, I mean, part of the thing is that, that it's an expectation. If you know that this is two month process, you know, it's a two month process and you, you know, you deal with it just like everything else. So if Rob says to, to people who come in, they, they do their thing and they say, hey, Rob, how long is it going to take? And Rob says, well, it frequently takes two months because complex cases we like to think about, but it could take only one, so that at least people come and are prepared for the idea that it, that it might. And if Rob presents it as a, as a positive thing, saying the reason we're doing this is because we want to take it seriously and not feel like, oh, we just want to get this step over with because we have to decide right now and sometimes these are complex issues and so on and so forth. That might be one way to, to handle the situation.
Possibly what we do is rewrite the application form, not rewrite the whole thing, but put a short blurb at the top that says like, question, how long will this take? Question. We might take two meetings to decide your issue, one to hear it, one to decide, but often simple cases are decided in one, you know, in one meeting.
Well, but Rob can, Rob's smart. And he can look at the case and he can say, this is going to be a doozy in half. And tell them it may take two months. He can tell them it might take two months and he can tell him it looks simple. It might take one or it might take two. You, you can put that on his shoulders and, and so we don't have to make that decision.
So I'm uncomfortable with, I keep hearing you say two months and I'm not real happy with that. And here's why. The first night that we hear it, we're not going to spend two months deciding the issue. They may have to wait one more month to get their decision.
It's the same thing for me. In my head, it's the same thing. It's not the same thing in your head, but I'm not the mathematical person you have.
Two months is sixty days.
Right, it's still, it's thirty days.
Right.
But the thing is.
Get it tonight or you get it thirty days from now.
So what are they going to go away with at the end of the first hearing? The sense that we've talked it all over and then we're going to vote? Like, how are they, are they going to go away thinking, wow, you know, they're, that, that, that went well, you know, they, everybody seemed to be.
That's, that's a problem.
Favorable for it, you know?
I.
I would like to leave it not written and make the decision on a case by case basis.
I've agreed to that. Are you not hearing me?
You ought to write it down.
Are you not hearing me there? I've, I've agreed.
Agreed to it, yes, but you, you got your two pens.
Yeah, nowhere here do I have it written down that it will always be two meetings.
Okay, well, so we're.
That's what I said initially. I, I want to lean more towards anything that isn't real clear, cut and simple. You know, if, if, like, what I'm going to be looking at is the clock and if we start a hearing at ten minutes after eight or ten minutes after seven and it's quarter to eight, I'm already thinking we might need two nights for this. That's, that's where I. I'm already thinking we might need two nights for this. That's what that's where I wanna be.
Which is fine.
Okay.
So what, in what form will this decision be made and how will it be made amongst us? Will you just say, listen, I think this is, do we, can you like wave a flag? All of us can go, hey, I think this is something that we should remand, you know, the final decision to. The next meet, like, how we, how are we gonna do this?
I'll send up a flag. What so if we do this, what I see, what I see happening is. We would be trying to collect all the information in the first meeting. And then we would put off the decision until the second meeting, so we have time to think about it. We're not rushed. And so what I, what I would do is like it's. You know, if if the presentation and the questioning has gone on for forty-five minutes, I'm probably gonna say, hey, look, folks. Uh, I just wanna say I'm thinking we ought to do our decision on the on the next meeting and not tonight.
Well, that makes sense if you say, if we say to people. You know, we we've found that when we did things and that they having to have this much discussion, that it's something that's better if we decide. Uh, if we, if you literally say. Or if we have a practice that if it starts to go to forty-five minutes, then it's time to to say.
Let's think about putting this, putting this decision into the next meeting.
How soon is, just continue the hearing?
That's the same, that's.
It is if we say we'll continue the hearing because we need time to think about this.
That's what I'm talking about doing.
Yeah, yeah, that's what you.
I'm just not real s- real clear on the language.
I think you need to say that it's.
I think you need to use continue the hearing because it's common language.
That's fine, I'll do that.
Yeah, and and that the decision to continue the hearing. Depends on what's going on. But it isn't that we're gonna every get, every hearing's gonna have to wait for a decision.
I think you can also make it so that it, that people understand that it's for them, that we're continuing it. Because we want it to get the attention that it deserves. You know, that this is a complex thing and that it requires. Thought and and a skillful, you know, writing of what the what the ruling is gonna be. So it's to their, you're right, may seem like. It's a bureaucratic thing. On the other hand, somebody may get a better decision. Because somebody doesn't just say, I wanna get out of here because I'm hungry, just gonna vote. Or or I'm too tired and then, you know, they make a mistake.
I think I I I'm impressed. How long have I been doing this? Six years? Uh, five, four years? I don't know. I'm impressed on how well the people on this board get along. And think through the things that need to be done and make good decisions. I really am. I, this is a committee I'd like to stay on because I think it works so well.
I think we also need to make sure.
Never have to come before us, did you? I've been here before, but never as the property being discussed as maybe in a butter. It's a, something to hear and have an opinion.
Very well. So how did you see us?
How did I see you, Susan?
How did you see us as a board if you were an observer out there?
I thought it was reasonable. It was good discussion amongst the board, but also there were good questions. The board asked of the person coming forward. And I think one of the things, whether it was set or unset, the board always, before they voted. Said, do we have all the information you wanted to present to us before we made a decision? Is there anything else that you want to say? And then the individual would say, no, you didn't get this and then, okay, and that was, I thought it was very fair. It was very fair.
One of the things that I think that that, and I guess the state told us that we had to have findings of fact.
Yes.
And I think that's really useful.
Oh, yeah.
I think it would be also very important to tell people. That there are rules about our contact, that we are not gonna go then now and all go somewhere and. Chat about it or feel whatever, that that we will respect the rules on this that about how this is handled.
Yeah.
So I think what I hear you saying is if we're gonna continue the hearing. Tell the applicants or remind them, they may already know it, remind them that. The board is prohibited from discussing the matter between hearings. We can only talk about it. Uh, with each other or even with the applicant or anyone else, we can only talk about it. In a public forum where they have an opportunity to listen to us discuss. Yeah, to allay their concerns that we might be talking about it without them.
Yeah, that's right.
I think that's.
Born meaning we're teeth yokers.
Yes, unpleasant to eat yogurt.
Yeah.
So what I'm hearing is that. We're generally okay with rewriting the the form of the agenda. But we don't want to say all meeting, all hearings will be two-part.
Right.
We'd like the freedom, especially I would like the the freedom to say. After a certain. Amount of time hearing a presentation, let's think about continuing this particular hearing.
But it seems also that we should be able to, in our discussion, say, hey, Mike, can we? Vote to have this, you know, continuing. Should that be something that we vote on?
I I would call, yeah.
Vote on whether we should continue the hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
All right. I think that makes sense. Yeah, because then everybody, it's not somebody, it's not just Mike saying, I'm hungry, I wanna go home.
And if that's, you know, if that's the issue. I'll go out and scrounge it. I should vetting sheet, total zero. Uh, okay.
So this meeting, Dan's an alternate, and I think you ought to get some videos, he'll speak.
Yeah, I mean, this makes sense. Remember we had the uh, situation with uh. Ed, where he felt, you remember that? He felt that we sort of. Did kind of a bait, you know, he sort of thought that it was one way. And then we voted in what he considered another, uh, the opposite of what he thought we said.
There was history to that.
I remember that.
He was primed to be very angry with me because he felt I had done that as a board member during his hearing.
Oh, that is.
So so when it appeared again that I had given every indication that I wanted to do this and then. At the last minute during the vote, I said, hmm, I can't. He got really upset.
I remember.
It was, I think it was. He didn't, he didn't like that.
But the thing is, with this kind of a hearing. We have to appear, we have to be open. To listen to everything the applicant wants to say. We better be careful not to scare them. The things that they're asking for are crucial and critical to them.
Yeah.
And we have to, we have to come across as listening carefully. And thinking out loud, so that when they leave with or without a decision. They feel like they've been properly heard. That's because there are so many times that we can say, no, you can't do that.
I'm really glad to hear you express that principle and that sentiment. It's been a a guiding principle of my chairship every time I've held the chair on this committee.
Yeah.
In other ways. Um, I, it's really important to me that. The butters, the public, everyone involved, leave the room. Maybe not happy with the decision, but at least content that they got the, they got their questions answered.
Well, and that they understand why we denied it. If we deny it, that they understand.
They may not agree.
Why, yeah, why the zoning regulations at that point have to take precedence.
Yeah, I I, yeah, I I, that's that's really important.
Yeah, and and if you wanna do the minutes first, that's fine. Um, I. I always think that when people come for hearing, you ought to, um, that it it looks good that you put them in front. You know, eh, when we didn't have Whitney.
Is that loser?
One of the reasons we changed the minutes was that we didn't have Whitney. Who doesn't make any mistakes. Eh, remember, we used to have to spend a long time.
Yes.
Correcting minutes and that's why we put them at the end. But with Whitney, we can say, well, I don't see anything wrong with these. Let's approve them. We are so lucky to have you, Whitney.
Before I forget this thought.
Let's let Maggie say her thing.
My thought is that we also need to, if we decide to uh. Suspend, postpone, whatever we wanna call it.
Continue.
Continue. I think we need to make it very clear to them what they will get the next time. That they don't have to redo the whole proceed, like, what are we gonna, what are we gonna do? We just gonna vote? Are we gonna review the case? I think they need to be, and we need to be very clear of what's gonna happen at the next thing is that. Say, say, do we have something all written up, a recommendation all writ- written up, and then we just vote on it? This is, this is sort of my only, my biggest concern about this is sort of like how to, yeah, how to make it work.
I don't wanna tell them at the, if we're gonna continue a meeting, I don't wanna set an expectation at the end of that meeting about how we're gonna decide.
No, I just mean about the procedure, saying we're gonna not, we're not gonna talk about this anymore, we're gonna vote. Or next time we're gonna get to, then we have ten minutes to go over it again and then I don't mean about the decision. I just mean about what they can expect. Are are they gonna go away thinking, oh, my God, next month, I gotta go through this, you know, the whole thing again, that's what I mean.
I agree. I think what we could do is. We're gonna continue this to give us some time to get our thoughts in order and make sure that we understand our logic. At the next meeting, we will review the findings of fact. We will propose a motion and discuss it and we will vote.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
And if there's more information to come forward, we'll get it.
Yes, and maybe we should say that we are not closing this meeting.
Right, if they, exactly, if they come up.
That's why you say continue.
Yeah.
So you you pick up where you left off and keep going. When you come to the end, you stop.
Alright.
Maybe we should just call it a continuance and we'll say we're going to grant you a continuance so it sounds to them.
That's a term of art also. I I wanna go with Susan's idea, continue, we're gonna continue this hearing to our next meeting. So when we get in the next mirroring meeting, we'll pick that up under old business and we'll say, alright.
Okay.
Uh, last meeting we heard from so-and-so, here are the facts that we found in that meeting. And we might go through the criteria at that point and then propose our motion and. You know, that might, that might be the way we do it. We'll have to feel it out, and I don't expect this to happen often.
Yeah, it's not every case that the the, well, what was two times ago, who came with Barry Schuster and it was all perfectly presented and.
Right.
Done, that was super fast.
Yeah.
You know, some of those other things where where people have.
But that's one that I might have wanted to continue.
Yeah, the the word continue is is the word to use.
I'm saying that that meeting with Schuster there, anytime somebody brings a lawyer, I might be wanting to continue that meeting. That's a, that's a flag for me that hmm. I'm glad somebody's got their ducks in a row, but I want some time to consider this and think about it. I like Barry and I don't want my affection for him and for the client to sway my logic. I wanna be able to consider it.
I was just pointing out one where that was a complex case, but it was clearly presented and so it was, the decision was. Easy, you know, was was easy to make as opposed to some of the other ones where people have come in and it had, it has not been an easy decision. Because information's lacking or their ideas aren't clear.
Alright, so have we beat this to death?
We have beat this to death.
Alright.
And Rob looks really tired.
Yeah, I'm sorry, buddy. What's that?
Did you catch something at what we're trying to see?
I don't know. I don't know. Alright, can we have a motion to appoint Dan Regan?
So move.
Like, could I, if I could, please?
Yeah.
Could I just introduce myself to people?
Please, sorry.
We read your little statement.
Okay, so I, um, my wife and I first moved to Enfield in nineteen ninety-one and we were here for. A period of time living, I don't know if anybody remembered a woman by the name of Carolyn Mary, she still owned a house on Foray. Uh, right across from the farm stand. Um, anyways, it doesn't matter. So we rented a house from her and then we ended up buying a place on Crystal Lake in nineteen ninety-two. And my job took me out of the area. My wife was a nurse at Dartmouth Hitchcock. And she was also at Vermont College and then they closed the nursing program. She went to Norwich University and. She was finishing up her uh, degree to get her bachelor's. I won't make this too long. Um, but, um, so she, uh, she was here and I was down south and then on the weekends we'd get back together. And eventually we moved down to Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, so we rented out our house to a gentleman by the name of Dick Jennings. Who worked with Mexico and Bang, um, nice, nice guy. Yeah, uh, for six years he was there. And then we moved a couple more times and eventually we came back to the area and began using. A house on Crystal Lake as a a weekend place, summers. I hate to call myself a weekender because we were here as often as we could, um, and it was quite a bit and we loved, we just loved the area. So we decided that, um, eventually we wanted to come up here full-time again. Um, and the situation allowed us to build a new house on Crystal Lake. And now, uh, as of June, we're full-time Enfield residents. Um, I had talked to actually the conservation board. Prior to moving in in June and was going to join the conservation board. They said, oh, we have to be a full-time resident and we weren't. So I didn't. And then it came back around that they were full and. We're basically looking ways to, for ways to contribute to the community. Uh, we plan to be here for the, for the rest of our lives. Um, I know Mike, uh, in that my son, my oldest son, who's now twenty-eight, used to babysit Mike's kids. Uh, he's now a fourth grade teacher out in Denver. Um, and I, a lot of respect for Mike, I respect the way the board operates. Uh, and I just love to hear you say, no, no, we wanna make sure that everybody has the opportunity to say what's on their mind. Um, and it can be challenging, but I I I like the way the the board operates. Um, so Rob sent out a um, a town newsletter last month. And in it, I saw that you were looking for alternates and I said, well, maybe that's a good way to, you know, put my my toe in the water.
We'd be delighted to have you because Crystal Lake's our biggest problem.
Lake, yes, is a source of meetings that need to be continued. That just be the rule. If you're from Crystal Lake, please expect.
Yeah.
Please expect.
Uh, I wear some of the issues on Crystal Lake, but certainly not all of them. Uh, it's funny, that last meeting I was at, it was a gentleman, very nice guy. And the meeting was titled, his his session was titled, he wants to build in Whitland. And I was like, no way. So it turns out that meeting, I don't know if you remember this, but a year and a half ago, it was misappropriately titled. And what he was doing was all, and I was like. Um, so I told him, I said, sorry, I was here to, you know, speak out against you, but. Um, it looks like everything you're doing is 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 within the bounds, so I stood down. But anyways, that's who I am. I'm happy to ask, answer any questions. We've never met, Susan, I think you and I may have met at one point, but.
It's possible.
Yeah, it's, so if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to, uh.
Well, I I think it's great you wanna do it. It's not the easiest job in town.
I know, I realize that.
I think in some ways, I was chair of the planning board for five years and I think that. They're on zoning, but they have a zoning board and a planning board.
Yeah.
Oh, why? So when I got down here, I thought, well, zoning board doesn't have meetings every month, which is good. And that they're doing really the important work of a town. We have five lakes. And all those second homes and since the pandemic, all these people wanna turn these second homes into mansions. You know, and so. Um, the, and and I'm not kidding you, we all laughed about Crystal Lake's our biggest problem, but where do we get the most cases? Crystal Lake.
Yeah, yeah.
They have all those weird shaped lots and stuff. But no, thank you for coming. I think it's really important that people understand that it's, this isn't just. We're not just nasty bureaucratic people that that there's a reason to do these things and it's for the benefit of the town. You know, I think sometimes people feel as if they're being persecuted and then you say, well, listen, you know, do you want that next door to you? You know, that what what will this mean to the town?
This board did have a reputation, it was for a long time, very, very strict. And it was very difficult to get a variance, especially if you were anywhere near anything that was wet. Especially if you were anywhere near anything that was wet. And uh, in the last ten years or so, we've become more reasonable. Um, Seeley has some trouble with that sometimes, because she was part of the old guard that was zealous about guarding the wetlands.
But that makes such, that makes us such a good board to have such different opinions.
Yeah.
You know, and when you were talking about having two hearings, I wish we'd had two hearings on that house on Depot Street 'cause we could have told them to make it shorter.
So we have Tim also, Tim's a lawyer, um, he's been do you know him? Do you know Tim?
I might recognize him, but I can't picture him right now.
Yeah, he's son of Meredith Smith, who was on the Sledport.
Okay.
And Doug Smith. His bunch of kids, he's a, he's a lawyer, and he was a um
He's a J P P O.
Juvenile probation, probation officer.
Yeah.
Until, he has been for a long time, he's just taken a new role where he doesn't have to do that. He's very happy.
That's hard to do.
Yeah. He's fun to have around.
Do you have other alternates now?
I don't think we do. I think our last, we had two alternates, and they both moved out of the area.
Do you have any questions you wanna ask us?
Yeah.
Not really, I think I have a pretty good sense of what it's all about, um. I will say, I need to do some homework, so if the next month that I come in and you say, Dan, we need you, I know what those five or eight criteria were, um. And can think along those lines as opposed to just kind of an emotional no, or oh yes.
Good.
The, the facts.
Ask Rob for blank application, 'cause it's got it all.
I think the most difficult thing is always the hardship that people don't understand, they just think it's, it's hardship for me not to have a garage. They don't understand, that's the hardest thing to explain to people.
Hardship and the idea that the variance runs with the land. We're granting a variance for the land, not for the, for the individuals that own it currently. So when we make a decision about allowing somebody to add on a deck. So that's another thing, when we, we decide about footprint, we talk about footprint. Um, there are other variances that we have, but that's the one we get the most. And if we let somebody put a deck on their house, we assume that that's gonna be turned into a two-story addition at some point down the road. That's the, that's the rationale you take. If you let somebody, um, and, and we didn't, if you let somebody build a an auto shop in the R one, you have to assume that the next person who buys that property and has that variance on it will expand the use, which is legal, we can't say anything about it. They can increase the size and increase the business and increase the hours unless we put those conditions in the decision statement. Um, so it can be difficult. We had a case there, um, an old fellow wanted to, he and his daughter wanted to rebuild their house on the lake and not too far from you guys. He wanted to make it two stories and do some changes, and we had to say no. And he died during the appeals. It went on for a couple of years. Um, but eventually, the Supreme Court upheld our decision and said, and the whole situation was rough. They asked for this, we say no, they appeal, we say no again. Not sure the exact order of events, they got up to the Supreme Court who upheld our decision. While that was going on, the people across the court from them doubled. They put a second floor on their house without altering the footprint of their house. And by, by doing so, they altered the character of the neighborhood, which was why we wouldn't let these people do their renovation. And so she came back to us after he passed and said, can I do it now? We said, yeah. Different case.
Yeah.
But that was a heartbreaker. We, we wanted to let that man have that variance.
Yeah, I think I'm familiar with that, and, and I, I think I came to uh, one or two of those meetings, I didn't have anything to say, but um.
It was brutal, and they were angry, and she got very angry.
And the neighbors were angry, neighbors, yeah.
So it can be difficult. But, you know, the points of law are that the, like Madeline said, it's the hardship can be difficult to understand, and it can be even harder to explain. Um, we will guide you. Um, we're not gonna tell you what your opinion should be, we won't argue you out of your opinion, but what I will do is, if it looks like you know, if it, if it looks like the ideas you're expressing um, aren't in line with the law, or they're not, they're not supporting one side of the argument or another, I'll let you know that somehow. Um, I've had to do that a few times.
It's into, it's a learning experience.
Yeah, and they do it for me too, you know, we all support each other like that. There's training you can go to, which I love, there's um, every year, there's a law lecture series down in Concord, you go on a Saturday from eight AM till about four PM, and you sit and listen to the lawyers and the New Hampshire Municipal Association.
Yeah, you can, there are, you can get, listen to it online.
Yep, listen to it online, and they review all the cases that have, case law that's come up. Changes to the RSAs, they talk about um, challenging situations, they talk about how to handle certain kinds of things. Um, and I'm gonna bring up two of those as soon as we vote you in, or vote on you, and let you guys know.
Call the question.
Yeah, okay. So do we have a motion to?
So move.
Second.
We both moved in second.
Yes.
Alright, so the motion before you is to appoint Dan Regan an alternate for the zoning board of Enfield, Z B A of Enfield. Um, is it just for the remainder of this year? Like, we have to do them every year?
Mine wasn't, mine was, was until I got elected to the board.
Yeah, that might have happened the next year then.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think you were an alternate for the first year, so it's, it, I think alternates run from the appointment runs for one year, and then we reappoint you at the next meeting. Or you get elected, stand for election and you.
One thing that you'll need to do, if you guys.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three in favor. Is you'll need to go to see the town clerk for swearing in, that's an official.
Okay.
Raise your right hand and give you the oath of office, it's sort of a procedural thing, but it's anytime to just walk in. Yeah, I'll, I'll send this paperwork down to town office.
Okay.
And you can swing down there anytime at your leisure, between now and the next meeting, if that take care.
Yeah, no problem.
And we'll get you a packet. Natalie, did you have another question? That you were about to ask something.
And you get a name tag.
Handy dandy name tag.
Alright, shall I tell you the things that I learned?
Yes, let's hear.
Uh, two important things, one I already touched on. Do not count on your minutes to represent the conditions that you attach to a decision. Do not count on your minutes to represent in court, conditions that you attach to your minutes.
So where do you put?
To your decision. You put them in the notice of decision. So after we do our motion, and we have our conditions, finding some fact and all that stuff, Rob will write up the uh, the notice of decision. It's a form, and in future, that notice of decision will also contain any conditions that we attach to the decision. And I'll be looking carefully for those before I sign them.
Makes sense.
Alright, so that was the considered opinion of two of the lawyers and all of the other people that were presenting. They gave examples of, of um, cases where that had where the towns hadn't done that, because that's not been a standard practice until recently. And they got it overturned. They were basically told you uh, didn't count. The other, um oh, we cannot give advice, we cannot propose alternatives.
Oh.
I don't think we ever have, huh?
We have, we have, yes, we have said, go, 'cause I remember the house where we were talking about the little one up on uh, that overlooks the, the parking lot of Jake's. And we talked quite a great deal about that. And said, you know, look and see about doing this and doing that, okay.
Here's the rationale.
That can make sense.
If you propose alternatives, or if you say if you propose alternatives, they're often helpful suggestions. The applicant can take that as a promise to deliver an approval.
Well, I remember that one, and the reason we did it was we were gonna deny the modular home that they wanted to buy to put there, and we said, go look at other modular homes. Which makes sense.
Strictly speaking, we should not be doing that.
All we can say is, you know, we don't approve this one.
Right, what we might, what you might be safe with doing is saying because this home is shaped the way it is, and intrudes into the setbacks as it does because of its shape, you know, and particular size, we have to deny this application. What we should probably not do is say, go get a more square one.
Yeah.
Because if we said, go get a new, a more square one, and they came back with a square mobile home, definitely.
Which in fact, they did, you remember, they did go out and get another one, and it did, it did change, and it didn't work, but you're absolutely right if it came back and it still wasn't right.
They, they acted in good faith, took that advice and came back, but somebody who misunderstood our
Of course, you can see, would say, oh, but they told me to do this.
Either misunderstood or request.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Can, can Rob give them advice?
Not as a, probably not as a participant in this meeting, and Rob should probably be careful about telling an applicant if you do this, the board will approve your application. You should be real careful not to do that.
Well, I didn't think that that was the way we came across, we just told them to look further.
Right, but you can see how in the hands of the wrong person, they could construe that as us saying well, if you do this, then, you know, it will be approved.
Right.
I think that's, it's the risk, I'm not saying that we did it, but certainly in the eyes of some people, and like, so, but they told me to do this, and I came back and they still turned it down.
And that's the point, that nobody has said to us as a board, you, Susan, me, Mike, Tim, Seeley, you did this and it was wrong, don't do it again. That's not what's happening here. What's happening is that the whole community of zoning board and planning board people are aware that
There's the risk.
Right, zoning boards should not be telling people, go change your application this way and then come back to us. 'Cause what the applicant could reasonably hear is, change your application this way, come back, and we'll approve it.
Well, that's what badly tried to do, isn't it?
Yes. Well.
Sort of.
Yeah.
That was weird.
Yeah, he knew that was gonna fly, he was just hoping.
Yeah, anyway, um, as you can see, it's not simple.
So those were the two big takeaways?
Two of the, of the many notes that I had, those are the ones that I felt were quite important for us to bear in mind. We must put our conditions on the decision statement that the customer will get, and we must not give advice.
I would think that.
So does that?
Good sense.
Yeah.
So here's sort of a, like a mechanical question for Rob, so if that happens, then that goes on a deed? Like, how does, you know, how, how does that then in perpetuity, a condition or whatever, how does that get recorded forever or not?
I don't know.
That's a good question.
Decided.
Right, how is it tracked that?
If we say there's a condition, then, then they, that person gets it and they sell it.
Yep.
And then the next person comes along, is that gonna be on their deed, say, or something?
Ah, there is law that says sellers must disclose to the purchaser, um, such things. So like variances or easements on their property.
Okay.
Um, there is such thing as title searches.
Right.
Okay, which are meant to find all that stuff.
Right.
Um, when he's asked by a title search person, I'm doing research on this particular lot, he has to find it, if he doesn't, he's negligent. Um, if the title search people don't ask for it, or if a realtor doesn't get a title search done, that's a problem. You know, your lawyers are supposed to catch all that. But ultimately, it's on the property owner to be aware of all the restrictions, covenants, variances, easements, et cetera, on their property.
My easements are in my, the easements on my property are in my deed.
Those are typically gonna be in your deed, I don't know that they put variances in a deed. But you are, you know, if I buy a piece of property and my house exists, you know, the previous owner was given permission through a variance.
Well, like the one from the other, from last week where they changed the you know, those two houses where the, the lot line went through somebody's house.
Yeah.
Somebody who were buying that property might like to know that.
Yeah.
It doesn't go through their house anymore.
That's gonna record.
That got recorded, 'cause it was a change in the lot line.
Now, this may well be why they're telling us very firmly, include your conditions in your notice of decision, because the notice of this, because that way, the notice of decision about a variance
It's there.
Conditions, and it's given to the title search people, or to the realtor, or to the property owner, it's all right there.
Do the title search people come to you?
Yeah, yeah, I'll get calls. Um, the other thing that we do is that uh, Julie Huntley in our assessing department maintains incredible files on every property. So we have the septic system approval, we have variances, we have any planning and zoning approvals that are granted for the property, that, those are in there. Um, and she's got a really good database essentially, so if you're looking at a property, you're gonna see her, and you'll be able to see all of the relative documents that go with that property. So.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah, so not all towns are that thorough, but.
You know, one of the nice things that happened, Kellaher is building six apartments instead of eight.
Nice.
Pretty good.
Uh, we should have told them he has to put a fence, but we didn't.
Which one, that's the one on the, by the railroad?
Across from George's.
Okay, um. Do we need to do anything with the minutes?
I didn't see anything.
There was one thing I want, I felt would
That was another takeaway.
No, no, say, go, go ahead.
Okay. It is ex- acceptable and standard procedure for boards to correct syntax without the whole board to be involved. You don't have to, you can, you can approve your minutes in substance, um. And at some other time, you can go, I don't have this, I didn't prepare this.
Tell it to the phone manager, please.
I didn't, I didn't prepare for this.
Well, I can talk about the minutes, because you know, I feel strongly. It's, the minutes are public, and they need to be as correct as we can make them.
Yes.
And we are fortunate, we are more than fortunate, that Whitney
Hold on.
Does such a good job.
Alright, but it's a matter of process, w- we approve the the content and substance of the minutes. It's not necessary for us to meet as a board to submit corrections for syntax. Changes like who was present, who wasn't present, that sort of stuff. If you get your minutes in the mail and you read them beforehand, um, you can send those in, those corrections into Rob. And as long as they are not things like, well, the decision didn't go that way, or that's not what was said, things like that. That's not what was said, the decision was wrong, those conditions are wrong, uh, those findings are factually wrong. That kinda stuff has to be discussed by the board. But syntax errors, punctuation, grammar, bad word choice, even though those things do affect the meaning, you can submit those directly to Rob, who can have Whitney correct them. You can submit those directly to Rob who can have Whitney correct them.
No, that's the town manager.
Well, I can't. But at least, um, so that's generally true of meeting minutes in the state of New Hampshire. That was made clear to us in that law session. We we can apply by that with our minutes in our group, but I'm not going to tell any other groups they have to do that. All right, so do we have any substantial issues to?
I think to change one thing in line forty two.
Forty two?
Forty two. Or does Mr. Burr came to the town with a former engineer, I think what you mean is a previous engineer, a former engineer would be somebody who used to be an engineer and isn't anymore. And line seventy four, I would say referred to an existing patio rather than referenced an existing patio. And on line number ninety eight, I would say the DES permit from nineteen from two thousand fifteen has expired. And on line one thirty eight, there's a queue or something that's just there.
Line thirty eight, the queue.
One thirty eight.
Line one thirty.
Or something that's just there, it's a queue.
Was that just like an extra that you had laying around and it did?
Probably added by my one-year-old.
It is so nice to have the numbers.
Yeah, that's a good. Oh, you know that thing about people abstaining because they weren't at the meeting with the minutes? Are about, that's not a thing. Do not abstain. Your job is to vote, do not abstain. Not even about minutes.
Oh, I have one other comment on line fifteen.
Fine lifting, Perkins and Linda Burrows.
And percent except if it's part of a company name.
Charles Perkins.
Linda Burrows. If there was, if their trust was named the trust and that was it, but otherwise please use that. Yes, I mean in.
My name, my first name is not Chair. I would like that corrected throughout. Not really. Okay, I think that's all we got.
Move to approve the minutes.
All in favor? We'll give you a minute to catch up. Rob, you got anything for us?
Uh, all I would say is that the planning board is diving in deep on the uh, it's called the New Hampshire HOP grant that we got. Uh, which is to basically.
Which is to basically.
Did zoning.
So HOP stands for Housing Opportunities Program. It's uh, we got a, we got a grant from them to review our zoning ordinance and. Basically make some revisions, good. Try to improve it. And as you guys know, that that document, our zoning document is. Thirty plus years old and it's been amended a hundred times and so really is, you know, to speak to what you were mentioning earlier. One of the big mistakes that they made when they implemented zoning. They created tons of non-conforming lots that obviously you guys know all about. Basically, uh, if you look at that zoning map on the wall there, you know, the the yellow zone is the R three. And so that's three acre minimum. And there's not very many lots on Crystal Lake under three acre minimum. That's what they're starting to do. If you look on that map there, that started kind of basically outlining. A shoreland zone, maybe an overlay. There is some appetite amongst the planning board for some significant improvements to shoreline regs for the town. Um, as you guys know, we had a tough summer with reduced water quality or increased protections.
Rob, would that initiative feed into the watershed initiative that's being discussed starting in the spring?
That's the conservation commission?
No, um, my understanding is Enfield and Lebanon worked together to get a grant. To have a watershed project that would look at how to improve um some of the issues that we had last summer and. It would start with a. I don't know the exact terminology, but a loan of a hundred thousand dollars that we wouldn't have to pay back.
I haven't, I I don't know, I haven't heard that.
To study improvements to the watershed to help with water quality. For the watershed, so some other towns.
Mascona watershed, isn't it?
Um, I think we'd probably start up at um Goose Pond, come through Crystal Lake, down Book, Bicknell Brook. And then right over to Mascona and then out to the Mascona River and then all the way to Connecticut. That whole watershed.
I thought it was the whole Mascona River watershed.
Perhaps that's the right name. I'm not getting it right, but um, so some towns I know, including Senapee, have had similar watershed projects. That they have looked at, um, what kind of regs do we need in the watershed in order to ensure the quality of our water? So that might go the other way. That project might provide input to the zoning ordinance revisions. Perhaps, I just somehow I wonder if they're fitting together.
Made pond up in Dorchester. Came down here.
Sometimes we go off the rails.
So that water comes down here.
Okay, so so we're aware that so the effect on us might be that. I wouldn't expect to see that town meeting this year, maybe not even next year, but maybe next year we, the town would vote on it.
Yes, twenty five.
Right, so after town meeting twenty five, we might start seeing fewer. The fewer variance hearings. Most of our variance hearings are about setbacks. So existing non-conforming.
Wait, so why would we be having fewer? Because those lots would be.
They changed the zoning around the lake. Perhaps what they would do.
Reflect the actual situation.
Right, so the minimum lot sizes would be smaller. The setbacks might be variable.
What, to to make the lots, whatever, to make.
Need to be variable based on the width of the lot. That's happening in other lakefront communities around New Hampshire. Do you have a fifty-foot wide lot? To have twenty-foot setback on each side. That means you have no room to do anything. So there needs to be some kind of a sliding scale there that, you know, if you've got. Twenty acres, you can do the regular setbacks, but if you've only got a third of an acre.
Is there some prescribed formula for that that that, you know, you can? Because otherwise people could, you know, right, build right up to the lot line. Is there some way to decide what's acceptable or not?
The planning board's going to be working on it, absolutely.
Sure, there might be a minimum. It might be variable from like.
Percentage of the lot or something.
Or or a zone like, if you're fifty feet wide, then your setback is five feet. If you're a hundred feet wide, your setback is ten feet, something like that.
Is this going to deal with sewage and water supply?
I would like to see that added. The thing you were talking about, Senapee, Senapee actually has a town of Senapee and actually Newbury is considering it, so is New London. They now have regs in Senapee that say you have to pump your septic system once every three years, which I think is. We don't, so you have to, you have to have a a licensed designer, design your septic system. You have to have a licensed installer install your septic system. Once it's put in. It's hands off and.
If it failed, you had to bring it back up to code and have it inspected.
But I've actually had people say to me in the Enfield, I never have to deal with my septic system. It's been working great for forty years. And I say, your system's in failure. What? You have never pumped it in forty years? It's failed. And you just don't see it. I mean, it doesn't manifest at the surface. It's just going right in the lake. It's just. And that's why we're getting all these pops with cyanobacteria. You know, as you as you know, I mean, we've got to get on.
Straight pipes.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. I know for a fact that there's septic systems on Mascona Lake that are Volkswagen Beetle buried underground. With a pipe going in the window.
Well, we had to put in the house in April, we bought it in seventy four, seventy five. We had to put in a septic system before we could move in and I'm pretty sure the straight pipe is under Route ten where it is now.
Yeah, I I just told, you can't transfer property here if it's, or can you, like in in. We can't, we we couldn't transfer it without either rectifying ourselves or a promise by the new owner that would be fixed within six months.
That's a state law on the transfer of ownership. Again, you install a septic system and have it sit forty years with nobody touching it, to me is a huge problem.
Disagree that it's not a state law that you have that was septic inspected. I just sold a house. In Windham and we were willing to have it inspected and the buyer to have a better offer than the buyer said. No inspection, so we never had that inspection.
And I'll get to the RSA, that definitely there, so some people disregard.
I would like to see that, because my understanding is Massachusetts does that, New Hampshire doesn't.
Yeah, I'll get to the RSA. It's definitely there. And this is, this is another thing that I have a big problem is the state of New Hampshire has all kinds of regs. But no teeth, you know, there's no follow-up. And they're, you know, low on staff, you know, the shoreline stuff is.
Is pretty strong as well. All right, unless there's an objection, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. And we can sit and chat afterwards, but people who want to go can.
Let's go home.